Okay, it is 7:00 PM and it's time to start the city commission meeting for Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. So please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now this is the first meeting of the month, which is always open for public comments, and citizens can sign up in advance, or they can just come to the meeting and make a public comment. We had one individual sign up in advance online to speak, so we'll start with Justin Yeari, if you're here. Is Justin present? Okay, not seeing him at this point. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And it would be on any topic that is not currently on the agenda or the consent agenda. Just come forward and state your name and sign in. And you're limited to five minutes.
Oh, I'll try to make it that fast. Hi, how are you doing tonight? So, my name is Richard Smith. I live on Kimball Avenue. I'm a 23-year retired combat veteran from Fort Riley. In 2011, my wife and I decided to buy our beautiful home here in Manhattan on Kimball Avenue. Our daughter was going to K-State. She was from Germany, and I was born and raised in Canada, so neither of us were going back to those places. And we chose this city as our home. Now, when I bought my home, I attested to what every American attests to, which is the right to life, liberty, and happiness, right? I mean, the one thing that we as Americans try to achieve in our lifetime is to purchase, own, and operate our piece of property. It's the only thing that we have truly that we can call ours. And that's for every American, right? So to my surprise, I started noticing this year, my wife passed away last year, and this whole last year has been about me reinventing myself, trying to find new ways to live this new life that I've been thrown into. But in the process of doing that, I've been getting things thrown at me that just are not making any rational sense to me. And I'm hoping you can explain this better than the people at code enforcement, because even they had to go research to make sure that they were right in what they were saying. And the thing is, this is what I've been throwing at me so far. I've been doing a lot of renovations at my house, nothing that needed permits. It was all cosmetic stuff. In my backyard, I took out an old shed, and I was going to put a work shed in my backyard. And I was told that if it's over 200 square feet, I need to permit that. No water, no electricity going to it, prefab, sold by these people selling them all around Kansas, right? I need a permit for that. So I went to a smaller shed to accommodate city policies. I put an above-ground pool in my backyard, 18 by nine foot, five and a half feet deep. And I was told that if I leave that up over the year, I have to permit that in a fenced-in yard. Wow, this is, this is not the America I fought for, right? So then, I bought a 35-foot travel trailer. Now, my driveway is on Kimball Avenue, and you all know what Kimball Avenue is like, okay? It's a granimal during traffic hour. Hell, it's a granimal outside traffic hour. So, the 35-foot trailer, I can't back into my driveway, because if I do that, then the tongue of the trailer is going to hang over the sidewalk. That's a ticket, right? I can't pull it in head-on, and I know that definitively now, because I tried to do that when I came back from my trip last weekend, and did about $10,000 worth of damage to my trailer, my house, and my truck, trying to accommodate policies set forth by council. But when I park my trailer temporary, understand the word temporary here, temporarily on my grass, in my front yard, running the length of my house, so that I can upload or offload from a trip, that's a ticket, because I'm parking a trailer on my grass. So it's, it's becoming very apparent to me now, in the last, since the summer basically, that we don't have the rights afforded to us, the ones that I fought for, the ones that this gentleman fought for, to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We have to abide by a section of people up here who almost, I'm assuming you guys all have, you know, $500,000 homes, maybe bigger, right, with lots of acreage that you can do whatever you want with. Maybe you have on-street parking, which I don't. Maybe you have alley access, which I don't. Maybe you have an in-ground pool that you paid for and put in your property that you're paying taxes on, right?
Could you please wrap it up?
Right. So I'm going to need some clarification here. Why is this, number one, not being enforced throughout the city, the parking? Parking is my primary. Why is it not being enforced throughout the city? If my $4,500 a year in taxes are not going to adequately enforce policies that you create, then why are you creating them?
Okay, we, what we have to do is, we don't have, you know, dialogue with the public speakers, but we'll, this is part of the Manhattan Developmental Code that you're talking about.
You mean, the people who are set to tell you what kind of buildings you can put up, where you can put them up, how water?
We've taken note of that, and what will happen is, we will have to do some further research, and the staff will get back with you.
Well, I can tell you this from my perspective, sir. I will be very busy over the coming months, ensuring that code enforcement is following all the policies that you have set forward. That's a volunteer job for me now. And I can assure you, you'll be hearing from me a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
I'd like to make sure that you know that right now, we're under one set of codes, and in the near future, we're going to be adopting new codes. So there's...
Or you can take that code, how?
I just want you to do the research on the future code.
If you could state your name and address?
My name is Justin Yeari. I live on 701 Ninth Street, Unit 7, over off of Blumont in Aggieville, 31-years-old, parent of two children who go to Blumont, as well as a seven-year Army veteran myself, and as well as a student at K-State. So that's where I'm coming at from today. The first, there's basically two things. I want to come and address to the council today. The first one is to air some grievances that I noticed about the proposed extension of the sales tax, which we all voted on the ballot today. And second of all, I'd like to keep the commentary productive instead of just complaining. So because I have an issue with this, I wanted to propose some alternative revenue sources for the council to consider, when they're, you know, looking for future revenues for government projects. So my main concern regarding the sales tax...
I normally don't interrupt, but you're referring to the county tax. This city commission has no control over that.
Oh.
So you probably want to make an appointment to address the county commission.
Okay.
Because if that tax passes, that's strictly a county thing.
Okay.
You have absolutely no control over that.
I still would like to, then, I can skip over the first part. I'd like to bring up some alternative revenue proposals then. So, first alternative revenue proposal I'd like to recommend is reallocating dollars that are already being spent. I think that's something that the city commission can get behind, because you're not raising any taxes on taxpayers, you're just shifting around the money. It's already there. So naturally, that raised question, what's the money I'm talking about? I would like the city commission to look into the Riley County Police Department budget, because I was looking over that budget line by Rhine, right, and there were some expenses on there that really stood out to me. First one is $200,000 spent on the, that's the actual expenditure on firearms and ammunition. I thought we had a police department, not a standing army in Riley County. And then I also noticed there was a $300,000 expense for vehicles. That's not pointing to maintenance, because maintenance is a separate line item, but I'm like, what kind of vehicles are they buying? An MRAP? When I was in the Army, you know, it wasn't, you know, I've been deployed to Iraq. Manhattan is not Iraq. There is no reason to be arming our police department as if they are a standing army. So if we could, that's $500,000 right there. Could do a lot of that with the community. And then, as far as actually raising revenue rather than shifting around money that's already being spent, so I have some ideas for progressive kinds of taxation that the council should consider, because, you know, I was saying with the sales tax, I think it's unfair to lower-income people, so, because it's like disproportionate to how much money they're making is how much they spend on a sales tax. So my first proposal would be, there's a lot of nice single-family homes in the city, and, I mean, I don't want to like, take away homes from like, regular people or whatever, but if you got like, a home, say like, $500,000, say like, one of those homes by the country club up on the hill, you could probably afford to pay a little bit more taxes. That's my first proposal. And by the way, I noticed that 55 cents of every property tax dollar goes to the Riley County Police Department, just, you know, to make that public record. And then, second of all, I mean, a city income tax, right? Anyone making more than six figures, pay a little income tax, because you're benefiting from living in the community. And I think those are all just general things, forms of taxation, that would be a lot more fair to the most vulnerable, needy, and least able to afford paying taxes in our community. So in closing, I like to, you know, I believe I identify a problem, should bring forth a solution with it. I hope that I brought forth some solutions to the problems that I've identified. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make open public comment this evening? If so, just come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and go to commissioner comments. I can start with Commissioner Ready?
Yes, thank you. Nothing major, really, except you'll probably talk about it. We're not going to have a meeting next week, on Tuesday, but I want to say, we have the Veterans' Day Parade, and Manhattan typically is one of the few communities that has the largest Veterans' Day Parade, and hopefully you'll be able to participate at some level. They have several different activities going on with the breakfast, as well as the parade itself, and other ways to recognize all the good things that we have, like was mentioned before. So if you can't participate, watch. And usually, we have students participating in the Veterans' Day Parade as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report, other than there's been a few more arrivals from Afghan resettlement, and everything else is going forward.
I, I just know that the city crews are starting to get ready for the holiday season. They're working on the lights in the Blue Earth Plaza area, and Lynn reported earlier in the downtown area. Thank you. And so, the preparations take a while, and it'll be another interesting year for our downtown in Aggieville, our commercial areas. I'd also like to say that the city has received some, I think it's CDBG money, for income-limited people to repair or fix their homes. Maybe it's a furnace, maybe it's a roof, maybe, so if, you know, if you meet the income limits, and they aren't that high, they aren't, you know, they're not, a lot of people could meet them, check out the city's website, I think it's under Community Development probably, and consider making an application. Give it a shot and see what happens, because we want, especially the lower, I want to appeal to lower-income people to use that money, because if we wait till the end, then it's not always targeted to that lower, the lower-income people. We try to use it up somehow. So do that. It's a way to help. Mobile home courts are, mobile homes are even eligible. So just think about it. Sometimes it takes a little while to think something through and make a decision to do it, so jump in.
Okay, I just echo the Veterans' Day Parade. It'll be at 9:30. Be a big event. We have a good time every year, and I think this year, the theme is, they're honoring Desert Storm veterans. It's been 30 years since Desert Storm, so that's their theme this time. There'll be some events in City Park. So let's move on now to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. The commissioner may request that I be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Yes, I will recuse myself on the appointment for the housing authority, which is item FD, and that is because of my employment with the housing authority.
I'd just like to, I'd like to make a point that on item D, which is the business improvement services fees for Aggieville and downtown, the rates are not going up, right? We're just, we are obligated to publish it and consider it every year. So that's important that the businesses and the community know that. And I'm excited about the Butterfield project in Browning, having the water line there. Those, and in the Butterfield area, it will even involve the streets, because those water lines are under the streets. And if you know that particular area, it has been needed for a number of years, so I'm excited to see that finally coming to that Northview area. With that...
Okay, seeing no other commissioner comments, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close comments on the consent agenda, and we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt the consent agenda as it was distributed.
Second.
And with, do I have to say?
No, he'll do it.
No, he'll do that, okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the rule?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes, except I recuse myself on that item that addresses the housing authority.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero, with the exception of item F1D, which carries four to zero to one.
Okay, then we'll move on to the general agenda. We just have one item on the agenda tonight, and that's presentation of the 2020 city audit. And Rena Neal, the Director of Finance, is going to take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I will present the results of the 2020 city audit. For the past two years, the Finance Department has worked closely with AGH, Alan Gibbs and Hulik out of Wichita, Kansas, to ensure we are prepared for our audits.
Pick the microphone.
Okay. Thank you. The 2020 audit is the first year of a five-year agreement with our auditors, BT and Co., certified public accountants. And we have on the call with us Emily Sheldon, the manager. I would like to thank the city manager's office and the members of the municipal audit committee for their support and leadership. I would also like to thank the finance staff and the other city staff for their contributions in compiling the information needed to complete the audit and financial report. A special thank you to AGH for their guidance and support, and BT and Co. for their professionalism, patience, and constant communication throughout the process. Included in your packet were four documents for your review, the independent auditor's report, a report to the city commission, the passenger facility charge report regarding the airport fees, and then our annual comprehensive financial report. The actual document, the financial report, is posted on the city's website. It's over 160 pages, so that was not included in your packet. I am pleased to announce the results of the 2020 city audit. The financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects, in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest audit opinion, and the city eliminated the prior significant deficiency related to payroll. The city had no internal control deficiencies. While the entire financial report is of importance, there are three sections I just want you to make note of and review from time to time, is the financial section, the notes to the financial statements, which the financial section includes all of those financial statements, and then our single audit section. These documents are used by a lot of external parties to review and evaluate the city's finances. I would like to highlight the single audit section, which is related to our federal awards. We received no material weaknesses identified related to the federal grants that the city receives. In 2020, the city had $6.8 million in federal expenditures related to those agencies, and the majority of the money came from COVID-19 Coronavirus Relief Fund, $4.2 million worth. This slide is just providing you with information regarding how we're going to prepare for our 2021 audit. We'll be meeting with departments in November and December to discuss the grants that they received in 2021, to prepare for that single audit, and then we will also collect information from all of the departments regarding Gatsby 87, which is a new lease obligation pronouncement. So we have a lot of leases throughout the city, vehicles and equipment, as well as our airport hangars and towers and things like that. So we'll have to collect all that information, and then work with our auditors and our financial consultants with AGH to determine how we're going to present that in the financial statements. We'll have a meeting with our AGH contact and BT and Co. on Friday to just set timeline and expectations for next year. We have started to have our weekly meetings with AGH to discuss our audit plan, and then the municipal audit committee has planned two meetings prior to the audit next year. The first will be in January, and the next one will be in April. Dr. Higgins, he is the Chair of the Municipal Audit Committee. He is here to provide remarks and update from the Municipal Audit Committee. And as I mentioned earlier, we also have Emily Sheldon on the call, in case you have questions for her. A special thank you again to our members of the Municipal Audit Committee, Jane Bloodgood, Commissioner Mark Hattasol, and Rich Jankovic for their support. Dr. Higgins.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rena, and thank you, Commissioners, for having us here again as members of the Audit Committee. Just as a little history, the Audit Committee started back in 2011 to review the results from the audit, also to provide guidance regarding issues that may arise out of the audit, but also to help guide the actual audit process as it goes. And I've been fortunate enough to have been involved with this for quite a while now, and always enjoy working with the city finance staff. I'd like to have a big thank you to Rena Neal and her staff for all that she does. I know it's been a difficult couple of years with a lot of transitions, and they've done an outstanding job just keeping up. And it's a, it's a very difficult thing to do, and I'll talk a little bit about the importance of it. But I'd also like to thank our committee, Jane Bloodgood, Rich Jankovic, and Commissioner Hattasol for serving on that committee. And, you know, as Rena said, it was a great report. We reviewed the report. We reviewed the steps getting there, and everything seemed to go very well. You know, we're pleased with the grant process that's been put in place over the last few years. The deficiencies regarding payroll have been resolved, and so, you know, I think we're in a good position going forward. You may know, but for, for a number of years, we've received, what's that called, the Certificate for Achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association for years. And that's basically getting your audit done on time, in a good audit, and so forth. And with all the turnover, we weren't able to do that for a couple of years. It was delayed. But we're looking forward, hopefully, next year, returning to that process and getting that award. So, you know, I think, you know, related to that, it is important to put a high priority on filling the positions within the finance staff that we have open. They've been open for a while. And, look, we all know it's difficult to hire right now. It's, there's just a tough time. But, but these are really important positions, you know, beyond the obvious in terms of just financial control. We have to think about the information that Rena mentioned that is used, really, by bond rating agencies to rate the debt of the city. And if, you know, we get into a situation where we can't meet those obligations of providing timely financial statements and so forth because of staffing issues, we could run into some issues with our bond ratings. So, you know, the committee would just like to reiterate, as we have before, that that is very important. We, the folks in the finance staff work a lot of hours to get this material done, and we're very appreciative of it. And, you know, anything that we could do to, whether it's reimagine that a little bit, or provide the funding for that that we might need, or, you know, at this point, go out and find some really good people. I don't know where. If you do, let, let me know, because we've got a lot all over the city looking for good positions. But, you know, I think that's real important for us. So, that's what I've got. Again, thank you for having us. Thank you for having this committee and community input on it. And what do we recommend? That they receive the audit for this year. And I know that Emily is, is on the call, if there are questions that are specific to the audit, or I'm happy to answer any questions to.
I think I read over the whole packet, and looked pretty good to me. And, you know, we don't have any, you know, major discrepancies here, and that's what we're shooting for. So a good job to the Audit Committee, and especially the Finance Department, for working under some very tough, you know, constraints as far as your technology and the number of people you have in the office. So excellent job.
And I'm pleased that you have been able to resolve the payroll deficiency that was cited last year and maybe the year before.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have that system of checks and balances, and that was all that was needed. But it did require an additional position, and so the city administration has accommodated that. And I am just excited that there are no findings. That is the, the report we want to hear every year. So thank you for delivering for this year. And Rena, you're relatively new in your position, and that's to your credit. So, hooray.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions either. I thought it was very nicely done. And like Commissioner Morse was saying, Rena, we really do appreciate all the work you put into this. It's definitely not a nine-to-five thing where you can just go home and come back to and it's still there. I know it takes hundreds of hours to make sure all the numbers are right, and with all of the departments we have, and all the things you need to work on. I do have a couple of questions. In the past, I think the Housing Authority was a little late, but I think that's been resolved. It's all been going. But I haven't seen, and I don't know if the, if you are the folks I should be talking to, or if it's our city manager I need to talk to. Typically, we get some kind of, what is it, bond rating reports? Is that just with temp notes, or do we, do we see that in addition to the audit? I haven't seen any of that recently.
So the bond rating reports, those are when we issue temporary notes in our GO bonds. And so, I apologize for not including those in the packets. They are summarized in terms of the results of those ratings each time we do issue debt, and we can provide those for the past issues and then the ones coming forward.
Yeah, I just want to know the current ones each time we get something?
Yes.
That always gave me, gave us, at least gave me some information about where we are at when, when people make those decisions. It kind of puts that information in front of me, which we tend to forget sometimes. And I don't know where the contractual agreements fall into this. You talked about leases. Did you also mention contractual agreements? Or is that not part of an audit?
So, in terms of our upcoming pronouncement, Gatsby 87, that is something new. It's really... It's related to lease obligations. So we'll be looking at our vehicles, our equipment, anything related to possibly Xerox coffee machines, those type of things, rental agreements that we may have, and to see if we have other obligations outside of just one-year terms. This is a very new and complex pronouncement. We've been reaching out to other municipalities to see how they're compiling and collecting data. We've heard back from Wichita, and then one other municipality today. AGH is helping us, and then BT and Co. is providing guidance as well regarding that.
Looks like more work.
Yes.
In addition to what you have. Well, thank you. I think when we see something boring and we don't have many questions, it's because it's, you're doing a nice job. And, and that speaks volumes, so that we're not having to ask you why, why, why questions. All of those are answered and working well with, with our city staff and with your own department, as well as our consultants. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On that GASB-87 lease obligation stuff, that's, it's, the city keeps track of all of that. We, everybody has, there's some big sheet that lists everything we owe, everything, all assets and stuff like that. So it's nothing that's going to provide us with any additional valuable information. It's just being able to report that to the people that care about that kind of stuff, apparently.
Yes, so currently, we do book our lease obligations that are capital in nature. The ones that are in question are the ones that are rental agreements less than a year or a year, that we don't really have a lot of control and guidance over in the Finance Department. It's departmental discretion. So we're going to work with each department to make sure that we all understand what is required of that pronouncement, and if we need to report that information, or if we don't need to report it.
Okay. Well, and also, I want to just add that, yeah, this, being understaffed and trying to get the mess cleaned up, you guys have done a great job. And pass that on to your people that.
Thank you, sir.
Really proud of the work they did on this one.
I did have a question about what you expect for this year. Because 2020, with COVID and anything, go, you know, no one's surprised at delays. I'm thinking about the audit for this year. Do you expect it? Now, you said that the Audit Committee would meet in January and April. So you expect it probably by summer, rather than this late in the year?
So we will work with BT and Co. and AGH on Friday to discuss.
To begin.
And to see how we can take that audit plan and back it up.
Yep.
To meet the deadline of June 30th. And that's to submit for a GFOA award. But the actual deadline for submittal is September 30th for a financial report.
Okay. And that's our deadline, or?
It's federal.
Federal deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
So it always takes nine months or 10?
It can, depending on our staffing, as well as if we are wanting to apply for that financial award.
Well, sure.
That's been something we haven't been able to do due to just staffing.
I think it'd be great to apply for it, but I was just wondering about the timing of the audit report. See, and it just gets more complicated the more departments we add on, and the, and the ARP money and the CARES money just complicate what you're doing. And I think we realize that, and do have an understanding that it's complicated.
Yes, the single audit is a very complex process, and requires a lot more review and detail and coordination with our departments. And like I mentioned earlier, we received $4.2 million in COVID-related funds. So that was its own separate audit process.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, Rena. I just.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Wanted to see what you thought.
Do you have any questions for Emily?
I don't?
Okay. Thank you, Emily.
Do we have any public comment on this particular audit topic? If so, come forward and state your name and address.
Hello again. My name's Justin Yeari. I live at 701 North Ninth Street, Unit 7. My question was, there was discussion about some kind of deficiency with regards to payroll. So I was just kind of wondering if the Audit Committee could expand more on what that deficiency was and how it was resolved.
I don't have my notes in front of me, but it was in relation to how we were keeping track of our timesheets and the sign-off on those timesheets, and making sure that they were approved by the appropriate officials. So in terms of, like, your chain of command. So we were able to work through that. We have switched our payroll system to Paylocity. So more of that process is automated, and we can keep track of that particular process that way. In the past, we used Sun Guard or Superior, and now we call it Central Square. But that was a manual timesheet process. But then also, we had an online time clock, but we couldn't keep track of the approval process.
Yeah, and basically, that was an issue with the last audit, and we fixed it for this one.
So it's not a problem this time. It's, so well done again on changing the vendor and all that.
I think that worked out fine.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Ron, if we have a consultant work with us on the ARPA funds, would they be able to keep track of all of that and just transition that information to Rena's office, so that it doesn't, so that that's taken care? Because there are also different stipulations for that, different, because it's federal and they have to keep track of it in a different manner. Is that something, I would hate for her to have more to do in addition to what they have. It seems like a consultant, like the county did, would be a good way to go on that.
So we'll still be obligated. At this point, as I said, the consultant assistance we've got from Baker Tilly is strictly more of a verification role. So when, when we want to do something. So that's an option for us moving forward, if we want some broader help, whether that's, you know, contract services that we might want, or hiring additional staff for the four-year period that, that we have to work with. Actually, I think it's a six-year period, till '24 to commit the funds and '26 to spend the funds. So those are issues that internally, we'll talk about how best to meet that. Ultimately, it'll be our obligation to be able to report on that, and that'll be subject to audit as well. So all of that is how we organize. That'll be a, a big factor from that perspective.
And those funds, I think, we're allowed to use those funds to have a staff member work on it, right?
Yes, yeah, those are eligible costs for administering services and overhead.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll close public comments and ask the commission for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we receive the municipal audit committee's reports for the 2020 city audit.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that was the last item on our agenda, so thank you for attending tonight, and the meeting is adjourned.